President Trump just signed an executive order earlier this year entitled.
All right, I'm silent, sorry.
We are in line. Okay, it is six o'clock. I'll call the leading order. The leaders.
The flag of the United States of America. To the Father, for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All right, first up is approval of the minutes of October 27th through 25th. We have a motion.
So move.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any additions, corrections, or other discussion? Good meeting with lots of information and they put a lot of work into the. So we have motion second, no discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes of October 27th, 2025. Next up is approving the role of accounts dated October 30th, 2025, the amount of $124,996.78 and dated November 13th, 2025, in the amount of $498,924.86. Do we have a motion to approve those roles?
So move.
Motion, we got a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving those roles as presented? Manos. Report of committees. Do we have any committee reports? Okay, very good. Administrator reports. Mr. Hersen.
Good evening, everyone. A few things to report on since our last meeting in October. Since then, we finished with our first round of student spotlight assemblies where teachers and other staff recognized 65 students in grades eight through six. Were making positive contributions in their classroom throughout our school. So those are nice events to have to recognize and celebrate those students. And we usually have good turnout families who come in to join us for that. So that's nice to have their support for those recognitions. On November 3rd and 5th, Monday the 3rd and Wednesday the 5th, we had our parent guardian teacher conferences, which were very well attended. We're still finishing up with some conferences this week, but we're just under 80% of our families who came in to join us for those conferences. I think that's a good sign for having that level of family engagement.
That's great.
Yep. For those families who are coming in to have those conversations with their with their teachers and staff throughout our building about the start of the school year. And, you know, with those two nights on behalf of the teachers, I'd like to thank our PTO providing meals on both evenings for our teachers and staff who stayed. And that was very much appreciated by our PTO group. Speaking of PTO, on Saturday, November 8th, we had our craft fair, which was a pretty large and successful event. You know, after an event like that, you kind of reflect on all that goes into it to make it so successful. And we had quite a few adults who volunteered their time, teachers, parents. You know, some students volunteered some time. So there's just a lot that goes into it behind the scenes to get ready for an event like that with the planning and preparation leading up to it. You know, certainly running the event during the day and then, you know, afterwards, once everyone goes home, staying behind to clean up and put things away. So again, there's a lot that goes into a big event like that to make it so successful. And we're lucky to have that support from our PTO, our teachers and our parents. And last thing to share, Mrs. Big, you recently shared with me that we have four sixth grade students who have been accepted into the Kennan McValley Honors Choir, including Cameron Pelletier, Summer Spinning, Adeline Steves, and Marlene Wilson. So just wanted to extend a congratulations to those students.
That's all for me.
That's all? Nothing going on? Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Report from the junior high school. Report cards will be going home tomorrow. We conclude the first quarter. What that also means is we are continuing academic remediation for students that are struggling. It's two days after school, two days per week after school for struggling learners. Our first math team meet will be this Friday. Our career cafe, so I talked about our first one, and we will now be hosting our second one with a focus on business. And we're excited to have Mr. And this is one or the other Farnum from the Cornix. Jake Warren, a former Winslow High School graduate and Thomas grad, which goes way back to his freshman year. I was athletic director. So that brings back some good memories. So Jake has offered to come in to speak to our youth graders. We're really excited about that. That'll be held next Tuesday, the 25th. Also on the 25th, we'll be doing our Remarkable Raider and Renaissance assemblies. So we recognize respect for responsible behavior as well as academic success for the first quarter. So there'll be a lot of students being recognized. The following seventh and eighth graders were accepted into the Kennan McValley Honors Choir. The festival will be held at Lawrence High School on January 30th and 31st. Elise Day, Autumn Evans, Eve Flanagan, Cooper Hashkey, Real Mishu, Sailor Pierce, Trinity Helletier, Sadie Snell, Cora Spencer, and Scarlett Weehand. And then the following seventh and eighth graders were accepted to the Kennan McValley Honors Band. Now that goes to Gerard Fortin, Ashley Hussey, Ashley McDermott, Alexis Palmer, Isaac Pepin, Storm Slater, and Hope Sullivan. It's always nice to recognize students that are doing well. And hopefully we'll have more news after that January date for more successes. Have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Couple of noteworthy things for students. Students of the month this month, we had freshman Michael Lubier, sophomore Blanca Abilis Sanchez, junior Jonathan Nally, and senior Avery Lowell. Right now, actually, they might be done now, but this week we also have our drama performance. The musical Newsies will be Thursday, Friday, Saturday at seven o'clock. So I encourage everybody to come out. It should be a fantastic performance as usual. Also getting into the Kennan McValley Honors Choir for the high school, we had quite the list. And it will be in your minutes. I've already forwarded that, but I will say their names. Moira Bevan, Caleb Benacci, Katie Bueker, Emma Clifford, Addie Gallagher, Caitlin Gibbs, Caitlin Giles, Morgan Haywood, Austin Jordan, John Nally, Kayden Rena, and Max Williger. And for band, we had Jacob Burrow in clarinet, Hagan Holloway on pinner sax, Cheyenne Liza in clarinet, Cooper, Ruthier Starkey in trumpet, and Bryce Whitman on trombone. So huge round of applause. That's quite the amazing festival of bands for us. Super proud of that. I mention this every year, but last Friday was our annual Futures Day. And for those of you in the audience who may not be aware of that or if anybody's new to the board, that's when we emptied the high school. All students, all staff go out and they are on a trip to either several college or universities. And this year we went to KBCC, Apollo, USM, UMaine, a separate UMaine engineering only trip, UMF, UMA, Thomas, SMCC, Hussin, Bowden, St. Joseph's, or they had the opportunity to go to military at the Air National Guard Base up in Bangor. And then every year we also do a career training opportunity and we always rotate between Chimbro, BIW, Sheridan. This year it was Chimbro and then the students got kind of a behind the scenes look at the bridge being built in town. And I would like to say they helped finish it and it's going to be open, but that's still closed for the time being.
You didn't slow them down, though, did you?
Yeah, hopefully we didn't slow them down. Tomorrow is another big day here and this is our annual admitting day where we have seven colleges, eight total admission reps being here that are going to be meeting with seniors throughout the day. So we have 63 seniors participating and it's a smaller class. There's only about 93, 94. So I'm not really quick at math. So that's, you know, 65, 66, 67%. We'll say that's close enough. There's 112 total appointments tomorrow with all of those different admissions counselors. And if you remember last year, every student that met with an admissions counselor was accepted to at least one of the colleges they applied to. And some students were accepted to all seven that they met with. So tomorrow will be a great vibe in this school. Just with kids getting in and kids ringing the bell. We always ring the bell if you pay attention to the high school Facebook page. There's always postings up when kids get in. They put their leaf on a tree or apple or whatever they choose to put up. Yeah, it'll be super cool. Great day. And it reminds us why we do what we do, right? K to 12, what are we in this for? To get them to what their next level is. You know, we get to reap that as, you know, the high school, but it's because of a lot of people. A lot of people get them there.
And the Special Olympics were today, right?
The Special Olympics were today. Yeah, we had a whole group of kids and mentors and athletes go to Unified Event Day, which is another reason why we got chosen as a unified champion school, which that presentation will be, it's in the works. A big presentation and rollout later this winter. We're gonna do something big, so. Any other questions?
Sounds good.
Lots, lots of good going on. And Jim's gonna have a lot of positives.
Yes. Good evening. In the area of curriculum, it's never as exciting. Two things that are being worked on. One, I would invite you to consider attending would be the upcoming Professional Development Day in January, we are hosting in-house a conference on technology. It's called Tech Together Winslow 2026. We have about 40 sessions to offer covering a range of technology topics focusing heavily on artificial intelligence. So we have not only members of our own faculty and staff who have signed up to present or share facilitated discussions with colleagues, but we have the main Department of Education is coming for the entire day and they're offering about nine sessions. Foundations for Futures, which is a literacy specialist that we've been working with, she's going to offer some literacy things with her document camera, which I think she's made a good sport to try to tie into the literacy stuff before she meets with this ELA department. We have a retired computer teacher coming and spending the whole day doing different sessions and so forth. So we sent out a survey in the spring. We asked what were the topics people were interested in and we have responded accordingly. So it's gonna be a full day. I'm almost ready to launch it to the staff to have them start signing up, but I would, you know, encourage you, if you're free that day, it's a great day to stop in and see some professional development happening at Winslow.
What's the date?
It's January 26th. It's all day. It will be hosted right here in this complex, the Junior High School. Everybody will be here for the day. So that's exciting. We're continuing to meet with our internal literacy specialists and we have an external literacy specialist we're meeting with to review the writing curriculum at the elementary school. So we have another meeting coming up for that and that will be ongoing work this year as we look to see what we currently, what are best practices, what do we currently have, and do we need to make any changes.
Great. Yeah, that's really cool.
Yeah, really.
Yeah.
Any questions from the show?
Thank you.
Hello for the exciting world of special education. I just want to share with you some of the openings we have. At Winslow Elementary School, we currently have an opening for a day treatment behavior teacher and a tech three in the same program. We also have an opening at the elementary school in our life skills autism program for a teacher. And at Winslow High School, we have an opening for a life skills teacher as well. We'll be having a site visit by the Department of Education this Wednesday, November 19th. They'll be reviewing the actual files in addition to the ones that I submitted. They may also take some time to look at selected programs throughout the district and then they'll issue their findings by January 31st of this year. And then along with the Futures Day at the high school, I just wanted to let people know that in addition to the tour at St. Joseph's College for the traditional programming, we also sent a small group on the same bus to St. Joseph's to view the Integrated Studies Program. And that is a program at St. Joseph's College that is geared towards students with intellectual disabilities ages 18 through 26. So it was very exciting to have those students go tour a college. They get to live in dorms. It's just a really exciting program. It was really nice to have that group of students there.
Well, kudos for that, that's all to you.
Any questions?
Good luck on the site visit. That's always fun.
Well, today's the first day of winter athletics for yet. We're not done with fall. Saturday afternoon, we are playing for our 12 state championship in football. We, to our knowledge, we could be the first school to have an A title, a B title, a C title, and a D title. How many schools? Could be that. So that's really exciting. We're, we're putting out to see if there's any interest in a fan bus. So some students who can't get down there, we'll see if there's any interest in that.
Oh, cool.
So we'll see how that goes. Since we last met, our girls soccer team played for the Northern Maine Regional Title and they lost in PKs, which is.
No, no.
No, double overtime.
It was PKs.
Yeah. And we voted a bell.
Yeah, that was a great effort.
I would have put my money on that.
Yeah, me too.
That was a great effort on our girls. I really made them so proud of that.
It's a great game.
Other than that, those are two big things, but we are, as you can hear, the ones going off in the gym, we start basketball today, hockey, wrestling. So we're, we're full, we're full go. And I'll give you some numbers what that looks like next month. Any questions?
Good luck.
Yeah.
I want to see him go by my house again.
Yeah.
But the top was burning down.
What's going on?
On the facilities then, there's not much going on. Not as exciting as last month, but we're ready for the snow. We got everything ready. So when the snow hits us, we can sand and salt everything.
More excitement means everything's working.
So far.
That's great. All right, as soon as there's more questions for Cory. All right, I guess it's a stormy end.
So at this point, 37.3% of the fiscal year has passed. 39.47% of the budget has been ensured and if encumbered items are removed, 38% has actually been spent.
Question for me, Anna? Straight forward, around the right path. All right.
Here. Yeah, I don't have anything in particular that I want to report on, but I do want to just make a few comments about some things that's going to lead into the next conversation that we're gonna have tonight as part of our agenda, which is our safety plans. But I just want to mention and go back to everything everybody said, 80% of the parents participated in the elementary school parent teacher conferences. 80% is remarkable. You start walking down through the lines of what different administrators are talking about, the number of students who, who earned the honors of Kennan McValley, either core or band. They have to audition for those pieces. That's not something that's that easily happens. They have to audition in order to be selected. So that's outstanding. The reassemblies that we have that Jason has talked about and others about remarkable, the assembly, the Raider assemblies, simply outstanding. Futures Day, never seen anything like that where an entire high school empties out and goes to different colleges, universities to give those kids the opportunities and Christine added the extra element this year. Just incredible there as well. And then it goes on and on. And then you talk about a sense of community. If you're at a soccer game or if you're at the football game, you have felt a sense of pride and community for Winslow. And you could just feel it from the fans. You could feel it from the players. You could feel it from the coaches. It was just there. And it's something that's a longstanding tradition of the pride that is here. The reason I bring this to your attention is because one of the topics that I want to talk about tonight is school safety. And one of the biggest things that we can do in order to have safe schools is prevention. And the research is very clear in terms of what the best prevention is, and that is a sense of belonging. So if you feel as though you belong someplace, if you feel as though the organization wraps their arms around you and you matter, then there's a much less chance of something drastically happening in that particular school community. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. I think it all plays into our conversations tonight. Great job, everybody out there. I know you work exceptionally hard for all these things to happen and take place. That's it.
That's good. All right. Next up would be a public comment. We do have a couple of members in the public here, technically. Scott's heard this before, but I welcome Taylor White. She's our, one of our incoming board members. So she's joined us. Technically she's a member of the public. So I'm gonna read the public comment so she can, she's heard it. I'm sure everybody enjoys it so much, but thank you, Cameron Taylor. And if you want to get up and say something in public comment, you can do that as well. Okay, here's the intro. School boards are elected to govern their schools. Our meetings are for the board to conduct the required business of the school district. By law, this business is conducted in view of the public. While these meetings are in public, they are not public meetings as a legislative session is not a public meeting. They are in the public, but are not intended to be interactive question answer public meetings. Law requires us to provide a public comment period during our meetings. The public comment period is your opportunity to express your views within the guidelines of our policy. It is not an open discussion period. Accordingly, do not expect the board to respond to your questions or concerns tonight. While a simple question that is raised in the public comment period may be answered at the discretion of the chair, or a more thoughtful and thorough response, we suggest that questions be emailed to the appropriate building administrator first, then the superintendent and that board members if you want to pursue it further. Please keep in mind that a response may take a few days due to other requirements of the day or to allow time to gather the information requested. I also want to remind everyone that you may submit written comments to the board in lieu of speaking during the public comment period if you choose. In order that we may hear from the largest number of different voices, we have and have time to conduct our regular business, each speaker will be limited to three minutes for comments at the outset. After being recognized by the chair, we ask that speakers identify their name and town of residence. Please try to be brief and try not to repeat yourself. Please direct your comments to the board. The board will not permit comments, complaints, or allegations, good or bad, about faculty and staff members or students. These are matters which the board is not permitted to hear in public. If there are complaints about faculty, staff, or students, these will be handled appropriately through established policies and procedures. We know discussions of school related issues can get emotional, but please remember I troll around watching and we are neighbors, so please be civil. We will not permit profanity or shouting at one another or comments that disparage or attack individuals or groups of individuals. Thanks for your patience during this introduction. I have hope and confidence that your participation will be helpful and constructive to the board. With that, I will open up for public comments. Do we have any? You're all good, Taylor? All right. All right. Good. Good for those online to hear it. And if anybody online wants to reach out to us, you can do so as the introduction explained. So with that being that, we'll call that closed and we'll move on to, we don't have the old business, so we're moving on to new business. So first up is reading, first reading of policy JIH and the procedures of JIH-R, questioning and searches of students.
So this is one of those policies that we did have in place, but we made a lot of changes to it. Basically, went with the recommended policy from Maine School Management, which really addressed some of the concerns that we face today with searches of students. For example, one of the things that we did not have in our old policy was the use of dogs. When we sometimes bring dogs in, if we suspect that there's potential danger in our schools to step lockers, we'll go walking down the hallways. And so we do that in order to make sure that we don't have a situation. Last year, I believe Chad had a threat here at the high school where there was a potential note or something that was left, that potentially there was something in a locker that shouldn't be here. We were here very late into the evening with dogs that particular night to make sure that everything was safe so that we could resume school the following day. So that's, that's one example. Another example is just to make sure that we clarify who can do the searches. We had in our policy that an administrator or a designee could do a search of a student. Given their due process, of course, and do the search, consultation with our attorneys, they said you can do that. Policy is accurate. However, if that person hasn't received the proper coursework, it's not something that we would recommend you leaving in there. So we went with the main school management recommendations and left it just as administrators. And there were a few other things in there that were, were changes to what we currently have. A little more clarifying language, a little more up to date in terms of some of the issues that we deal with. But for the most part, we thought that the new language fit better for the times that we're in. And the committee met on two separate occasions. This wasn't just a one curriculum meeting, a policy meeting. This was a two policy meeting. Policy that we reviewed as was, that is the AI one that's coming up as well. And felt as though this was a better fit for us at this particular point in time and recommended to bring it to you as a first read.
We did spend a fair amount of time on this and just to make sure that it's what we wanted it to be. I think it's pretty thorough. There's a policy you want to be thorough on, Mrs. Martin.
Any questions? Stop.
Just the only thing that kind of stuck out to me was, I'm not sure if, this is what you meant to say, but when it says you want to search the entire student body, I'm assuming that means you want to search all the students in the school as opposed to the entire student body?
Same.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Definitely an important piece to keep our schools safe. Without any questions, do we have a motion to approve the first read of policy? Let me, let me back up. We have also JIH-R is all one proposal here. These are the procedures that go with the policy. So I don't know if there's any questions on that. Otherwise I have to take a motion to approve the first read of JIH and JIH-R.
Make a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? One second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the first read on policy JIH and JIH-R? Very good. Thank you. Next up is the first read of policy IJNBD and IJNBD-R. Next up is the first read of policy I J N D D and I J N D D dash R, which are the procedures to go with. This is a new policy, artificial intelligence use.
So Michelle alluded to the fact that we're going to have a very robust, um, professional development day in January on artificial intelligence. Our, our instructors obviously are already delving into artificial intelligence, all of you are, because everything that you do today is somehow related to artificial intelligence in some way, whether you think it is or not, it really is. We did not have a policy on artificial intelligence per se. We had things on technology. We had things on use of various devices. We had, um, various other technologies that relate to, but nothing specifically on artificial intelligence. And some of the considerations we need to take into effect when using artificial intelligence, when to use it, when is it, when is it not appropriate to use it, when you use it, what is it that you need to take into consideration? All of those various components that our teachers are learning as we work through this process as well. So, um, Drummond and Woodson, um, had created a policy and worked with main school management on this particular policy. A few other school districts have adopted this particular policy. There isn't a whole lot out there, um, for policy on this topic at this point in time because it's all new and it's developing. Other school districts are embedding portions of artificial intelligence questions and things to consider in existing policies, which we as a policy committee felt that becomes difficult because if there's ever a concern or an issue, you want to have one place where you can go and get your answers as opposed to be picking all over the place. I will tell you that we will be revisiting this often because it's constantly changing. So it's not something that's going to be set in stone for a long period of time. It'll constantly evolve. But we need to have something in place that will guide us as we work through this this year that guides teachers. James Scrayback, the association president, is on the policy committee. He sat in another meeting. He felt, he felt comfortable with the language that was in this as well for teachers. Feeling as though a component of this was to provide professional development for teachers in order to use, um, artificial intelligence, which is a lot of the sessions that Michelle was referring to that will take place in January. So with that, we're looking at this as a first read for this particular policy.
I'd like a motion to approve the first read of the, wait, what are we calling it? I N, I J N D D and I J N D D R, artificial intelligence use policy unless somebody has to make.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Second you can. Any discussion? Peter says, I'm sure we'll be talking about it again. This thing has evolved weekly, it seems, in some cases.
I'm not a technology guy myself, but I see commercials on the YouTube about Grammarly and things like that. Is that, is that stuff used pretty frequently? Do students have Grammarly, the other programs like that? Is that something that students are using?
There are various programs that are being used. I'm not familiar with that one. I haven't heard that.
It's a part of our Google. It's a part of our Google speech.
Okay.
Oh, it's embedded? Sort of. Is that like automatically going to check students' writing for grammatical errors and things like that?
And the point you're bringing up right now, I can see the look on your face and you're thinking, whoa, are they ever going to do the grammar on their own anymore? I see it very across your, very across your face and I think those are some of the things that we're having conversations with, with instructors in terms of artificial intelligence. So in this particular assignment, you're not going to use any artificial intelligence at all, not. In this particular assignment, you're going to use artificial intelligence after you've started a draft and you want to check and you want to check for editing on your grammar. So you might use that component. In this particular draft, you're going to use artificial intelligence to further, to further enhance what you've done, which you've got to demonstrate to me what you've done for us. So there are different ways in which to use and you to use the tool. And these are the things that we're learning as we go through this because it's, it's not going away and we need to learn how to live with it and show our students how to work with it.
Right. Another interesting thing that I saw this week was somebody was watching a, a, a video thing. They're talking about, um, like doing a search on your thing and was talking about, and they said, if you ask whatever, Chat G P T or whatever, who killed Bobby Kennedy, it'll give you one answer. But then if you ask where was the assassin standing at the time that Bobby Kennedy was shot, it'll say, you know, in front of them. But then if you ask where, where did the bullets come from that killed Bobby Kennedy, it'll say from behind. So it's pretty interesting how you can get all kinds of different contradicting answers when you.
The internet, the internet, everything you read on the internet, like on our heads.
Because that's essentially what it's doing is calling out good and bad information on the internet. And that's part of this whole process is, is to help educate kids on you using reliable sources and not just trusting AI to be the deal and all because it isn't. And they need to understand that just as much as anything else. Yeah. Yeah, it's, yeah, there's definitely those who out there think, well, what's on the internet, everything is true. Well, okay, and AI is going to convince you of that.
You can't go with the first answer.
No, no.
You can add to that. Wikipedia, you know, is a good example of all of them.
Yeah, so there's a lot of examples of, or things. I was looking up something the other day and it was, yeah, it wasn't actually very good. So, yes, so it's important for the students to learn that as well. So this is, this is a good guide to, to develop those conversations about it because, I mean, the kids in the future are surely going to be living with this. They need to understand.
How to learn without.
Uses and limitations. But, but it's a starting point. It will evolve, so. So we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the first read on I J N D D and I J N D D dash R? Yes, very good. Okay, um. Next up is the reaffirmation to allow the superintendent to accept resignations. And it's something we have allowed for quite some time now. If somebody resigns, there's usually, you're not going to tell them they can't, so having the superintendent being able to accept resignations when they happen is a timely thing to do so you can also start the process of re-losing it as well. They don't want to wait for us once a month, oddly enough. Do we have a motion to approve the reaffirmation of allowing the superintendent to accept resignations?
So move.
Motion. Do we have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the reaffirmation of allowing people to accept resignations? It is unanimous. Very good. Next up is the district's safety plan. I assume you're presenting on it?
Yeah, so as part of your, Roy Packard, you had a couple of enclosures and one of them was that it's called a staff safety procedures for the Windsor Elementary School. And then you had another enclosure, except it was the same thing, staff. For Windsor High School and Winslow Junior High School. So your vote really is approving those plans. I, I will tell you that the reason why is, uh, staff on the top of it is because there are two versions of this. There's another version that will go out to first responders and administrators and that has cell phone numbers of everybody who's, who's involved with all of this. And the reason that obviously people didn't want all of their cell phone numbers listed in here was for privacy because a lot of administrators, it's their, it's their own phones. And so that's why there's a version here that's, that's just a staff. The staff, however, would share those private cell phone numbers to each other. So if there's ever an emergency, they can reach out to one another, um, during that particular time. These plans continue to evolve. We, we, we look at these every year. We make small changes and we make larger changes. For example, I noticed just reading this tonight before coming here that there's a, there's a conversation about safety care training and restraint and seclusion in the language that's in here that we have in our, in this emergency procedure still refers to the language that we had in there, um, previously before a recent change was made to that where it now says if the incident could cause a student or an adult to, to, to receive medical attention, then you can use the restraint as opposed to imminent harm. So, so that's just a small, just a small example of how quickly things are changing. So we, so there really are two parts to this. There's this part that, that you look at and this covers different types of scenarios, bomb threats in your school, fire drills, other types of hazards that might, that might take place, that students may have to leave the building and they may have to evacuate to a site or they may just have to leave the building and be outside. So you've got that portion of this. But then you have another presentation that we want to talk to you and have each of the building administrators take a moment to share parts of the presentation that we would like to, to, to talk about, which is the, um, school safety active shooter plan. And this is a touchy subject, of course. It is one of those things that you hope you never, ever have to deal with. But it's best to prepare and have a plan and have conversations about what ifs and to have specific pieces in place if something should happen. What we're going to talk about tonight is not all of the details because we have been to several workshops on this topic with law enforcement agencies and you get different information based on who you speak with and which workshop you go to. Some will say you should divulge where you're going for a rendezvous point. Others will say you should not. You should wait until you have an incident. So you get different responses. It gets fluid. So the pieces that we're going to talk about this evening are going to be generic in nature with your understanding and knowing that there are more specific components to what you're going to hear tonight. But we're, but we're not talking about it because it's not something that we want to post on the web for all to see, for safety reasons. If that makes sense. In the development of this, we involved our local police, um, we involved our local resource officer. We involved, um, um, some resources from the state came into our administrative team meeting, had a conversation with us as well. We had a fire, uh, fire department was involved with us as well. Randy Wayne, Leonard McGee from the police department made site visits with us to look at where a rendezvous point would be for us. Ellen, who's our SRO, could not be with us tonight and she felt badly about that. She's really not feeling well. She wasn't at work today. But Ellen has been very involved with us in our administrative team as we've put this together. What we'd like to do this evening is just have a conversation about some of the components. I would ask the building administrators to touch base upon some of the things that are in this plan. They each have a, have a slide on what it is that they're, um, going to be discussing. These will be updated annually. You're going to hear this every single year. And this particular, uh, focus on this particular plan calls for what we would do with an active shooting, shooting scenario. So I think it's important to, to, to mention, and Jason's going to kick us off with his first slide in terms of what do we currently have in place?
I think he's already covered this here.
I have covered it, yeah. And that. And that's where we are.
And back to this disclaimer, when we talk with two staff and students, we also start with that disclaimer because this is a very difficult topic and can create, um, trauma within someone's own trauma. So our routine safety practices, all school doors are locked from the start of the day until after students leave for the day. Visitors must request access to the building, so we want to minimize access points throughout the day. Probably same as true of Tom. For example, schools in session, there is one entrance at our, there's two technically at the junior high, high school for visitors to access through a buzzer system, which is through the secretary. So we're asking questions through the intercom. All door, we'll go back to the first bullet, all doors, school doors are locked throughout the day. As teachers leave the building, whether it's PE teacher, uh, they're instructed to obviously close the door behind them. They carry a walkie or cellphone because there are outdoor activities that we do throughout the school year. Uh, the third bullet, visitors must receive and wear a visitor badge. We obviously want community members in our schools. It's very common, especially probably at the elementary school. So they must check in. We have Colby mentors, we have guest speakers, et cetera. An additional layer, any volunteer must go through, uh, fill out a form and be vetted through the superintendent. So ten parents want to chaperone our school dance. That's great. We love volunteers. I try, I try to get all of you. You fill out a form, even though I may know you, um, I send that information to Peter. That would be considered a volunteer as another safeguard outside of the normal school day.
As you go around the building, you'll notice that doors and windows are numbered. And that is not something that we just made up. We worked with EMS and the PD, uh, to kind of come up with this universal numbering system. So the front of the building is A and then each door is numbered after A, one, two, three, four. And then this side of the building is B, same thing, and then the back is C. And there is no D because there's no doors on that end of the junior high, on that side. Again, we use that standard form that was used by law enforcement as well as EMS so that way they know when they see, you know, somebody says they're at B three, they know exactly where to go to B three. We also have a school resource officer who's fully trained, uh, Winslow police officer. She works within all three buildings.
One of the things, you know, as we've had these conversations, um, and we've had a lot of conversations, as you can well imagine. And each time you have a conversation, you can think of something else and some, and something else comes up. We have these conversations with, okay, if there were ever an incident and the call was me, you know, it's not just the Windsor police that are going to arrive. It's every police unit around. And so when you go to a universal numbering system of windows and doors, that's why it's crucial because it tells somebody who knows nothing about your building where to look immediately. Everything is going to take place, research says, between the first six to nine minutes. Everything's going to happen. And the philosophy has changed on the part of the police as well. It's no longer come in and set up, set up a, a, you know, a, a command station. They don't do that anymore. They come in and they go to where the issue is. They try to take out the attacker. So everything happens quickly. Which is a much different, different approach than in past years. So that leads into the current best practices and in consultation with our local police and fire departments, we've adopted the following terms, um, and conditions that would be applied during an emergency. And this, this next sheet that you, that you're going to see is you've probably, you know, you may have seen this, you may, you know, the, the, our, our students have seen it. I can tell you that. High school has gone over with the students, junior high, middle school, everybody has gone over it. The administrator is going to walk you through what each one of these means, um, right now.
And we have it hanging out. You'll see it right by the door. This is hanging up in every single classroom as you walk around the building. There's a clipboard, uh, classrooms have a little bit more information than the library does, but there's a folder there that the teacher, as they're going out, could be for a fire drill, could be for anything. If they're leaving in an emergency, they are. could be for anything. If they're leaving in an emergency, they are, "Look at that van." They grab the clipboard and they go. And then there's more information in there, which maybe Jason will explain later, if you know. So lockout. This happens probably more frequent than what you might realize. That means that there's something going on outside of the school building, and we just want heightened awareness. Now, to get into any of our buildings, you have to go through two locked doors to get in. So there's already that little bit of extra protection. But if a lockout is, and that might be, maybe there's a bank robbery going on in Waterville. Several years ago, there was somebody hunting with a bow and arrow in the woods behind the school. And so the SRO at the time contacted the superintendent at the time and said, "Hey, listen, we got this situation. We want to go on lockout," just so that we can go have a conversation with the person and figure out what's going on. So we went on lockout. This hat, like I said, you know, there's a lot of different things. Usually, when this happens, somebody else is stationed at the front door. Doesn't mean that we're not going to allow parents to come get their kids if they have a doctor's appointment or whatever, but either usually it's me, but it could be Officer Stewart there as well, just kind of checking in with people, making sure it's not someone that could potentially do harm. Inside the school, it's business as usual. We'll make an announcement that there's a lockout going on, but everybody's going to classes. They're going to the bathroom if they need to go to the bathroom. They're going to the lunchroom if they need to go to the lunchroom. It's just kind of business as usual.
Okay, the next one is clear the halls and stay in place. Students and staff clear the hallways and bathrooms. If in the hallway or bathroom, students should get to the closest classroom with an adult and stay in place and close shades. This is used quite commonly through the administrator. I'll give two examples of this year we've used it. One is a dysregulated student who we don't think has reached the level of hurting someone, but they're just not in good spirit or mindset to function. Bell might be ringing in the next five minutes. We can't get them out of the hallway. So to protect the student's confidentiality and everything else that goes along with middle school kids and high school kids transitioning, we may just clear the halls and stay in place for a moment. The second, more common, unfortunately, late in the last few years, is a medical event. And we try to be very explicit as much as we can, again, to protect the confidentiality of the individual. At this time, we're going to clear the halls and stay in place. We have a medical event in the back hallway near the junior hygiene room. So what that does, it sends a message that there's something going on, but it doesn't heighten the awareness of the next tier that Mr. Hurst was going to talk about, like, holy cow, is there some, is there an intruder, and are we safe?
Okay, so stay in place and lockdown, very similar to how Jason started his. We have students and staff clear the hallways. If they're in a hall, if students or staff is in a hallway or bathroom, they go to the nearest classroom with an adult. They are to stay in place, pull the shade, and lock the door. At least in our building, I don't speak to the other buildings, but our doors are always in the locked position. We have a magnetic strip over where the door latch is secured. So if we're in a position where we need to quickly close the door and have it locked, they don't need to fumble for a key or try to go around and lock it. They just move the strip and close it, and it's already locked. You know, different scenarios where this might be in place. If there's a safety concern in our building already, either with a student or an adult, maybe a parent who's upset, we're really concerned about safety, we might use, utilize this procedure.
And the last one is, you know, kind of code red. That's lockdown or evacuation. That's when there is a potential person that wants to do harm in our building, an armed intruder coming in in the back, math science room. Maybe they, you know, busted out a window, gotten in. We've empowered everybody in the building to be able to call for this. And the difference is, you know, if you can evacuate, evacuate. If you can safely get your class out of the building, you get out and you meet up at the rendezvous point, which we'll discuss briefly in a little bit. But if you can't, then you need to lock down. We used to teach people to hide in the corner and just be quiet, right? Well, as we've learned, unfortunately, through some different school shootings, that that's not always the best option because you make for easy targets. So what the training tells us now to teach is be ready to throw something, right? If you've got a math book in your hand, you know, one teacher talked about picking up a chair and being ready to hit somebody, as obscene or as crazy as that might sound, that's actually true, because if somebody's trying to do harm to you and they have to dog 20 math books, it gives you time to counter, right? If you're throwing a chair at somebody or hitting, it just gives you time to counter. And, you know, it's hard for us as adults to have this conversation, but if you think about our kids, they've grown up having these conversations, then it's almost like second nature, which is really, really sad. But again, if you can evacuate, be prepared to evacuate. And we talk to kids about this as well, and to try to train them, because to be honest with you, when this happens, we don't know how we're going to act, right? As adults, we don't know. I can say this is what I'm going to do, but I don't know, right? There could be a classroom filled with people that the teacher freezes, doesn't know what to do, and one of the kids has to step up. We did have a medical emergency at school a couple of weeks ago. And if I told you how the kids reacted in that moment, it was phenomenal. The kids did exactly what we wanted them to do. Somebody ran down to get the nurse in the office to let them know. A student went over to the side of the room and grabbed where their cellphone was and called 911 immediately, while two other kids took care of the staff member. And then a bunch of other kids, like guided people out of the room, across the hall to go to somebody else's room, like instinctual. The kids were phenomenal.
So as Chad alluded to, the guidance, the guidance to staff and students has changed. It used to be pull the shades, hide in the corner, lock the door. As we know, unfortunately, a lot of incidences where somebody has kicked the door in, and everybody's hiding in the corner, and it's not a happy ending with that scenario. So now, all of the information that you see is based on the latest trainings and what you're hearing, procedures and practices. And what they're saying to us is that everything is situational in nature. So what Chad says, you know, evacuate if you can, that may not be possible with an elementary school class, because they can't just take off and run. They may have to try to stay more with their teacher. They may have to try to leave as a group. You may have situations where somebody's not able to leave and move. You have to make a quick decision. What are you going to do? I've asked building administrators to start doing situational activities with their staffs during staff meetings, just like if I were to say to you tonight, "Three gunshots just went off in that hallway. What do we do? Quick." "Another gunshot just went off. That's four. There's screaming. Two more gunshots. What do we do?" So this room has gotten very quiet. It's gotten very quiet because it's a very drab scenario that I just painted for you. We hope it's never going to happen. But if it does, we need to start having some muscle memory in terms of what might you do in that situation? My suggesting this to you right now will force you to, as you walk out of here tonight, you're still going to be thinking, "What would I have done?" That's what I want you to do. What would I have done? Because we want you to be thinking that way if you've got children that you're trying to save. So when we get to this whole piece, run, hide, and fight, as Chad alluded to, it may sound silly to throw a book at somebody, but if you've got 25 people throwing dictionary at somebody, it may be enough of a distraction to have two other people jump on that person and do something physical. So as I said before, six to nine minutes, you've got to take care of this within six to nine minutes. So that's when everything happens. Again, this next step, all staff are empowered to make the best decisions they can based on the information they have. Michelle and I went to a summer training in, where we were, Michelle, someplace outside of Augusta, some little place. But they had this training with all these police officers from the state in a school, and they set up different scenarios. So we were standing in the hallway. They gave us the glasses, and they gave us the ear things and whatever. So we're standing in the hallway, and we're hearing what sounded like gunshots down at one end. And she and I looked at each other and thought, okay, we would leave and go out this door right now. Police officer came over. We said, "This is what we thought we would do. The shots are fired from that end." He said, "Not necessarily. The shots are being fired there. If you run down that hallway and go outside, you may open yourself up to something that's taking place that they now have a clear sight to you outside. You might be better off to hide in one of the rooms and close the door in that particular situation." So everything is situational, and there's almost no right answer. And it's hard for me to say that, but you kind of have to feel it out and kind of know, react quickly in terms of what you think you can possibly do.
They also spoke about, you know, when you think about this facility, it's quite possible an event could be taking place, and there are staff and students who know nothing of what's going on because they can't hear it. They have no idea. So to make the decision to exit in any one direction, you're not really sure where it is because you can't hear it because of the distance. So there were all these complicating scenarios in making the best decision that you could with what little information you may have.
So in the next, and this is a tough one. So we've had numerous conversations about this. We've visited where, we've had two separate sites now. We're on our second site. We've visited, we've had the police go to the site with us. We've discussed what would happen at the site, which entry we would ask the parents to come in, which entry the students would come in, where we would house the students once we're inside, how would we help parents relocate, reunite with their students, where would they leave that particular building. Staff members from each building, principals have been asked to identify who those staffers would be that would be inside with the kids, organizing them, who would be in a special area that would invite the parents in with a table to make sure that we have your child. If your child is here, you're going up these stairs to reunite. If your child isn't here yet, you're going up those stairs in a separate room to wait. We've worked out all of those details. But we're not telling you in public, while we're online, where we're going, because it's not that we don't trust our families. It's the outside world listening that we don't want to announce this to everyone as the police recommend not to do. So this is where it's going to get really tough. So in the event of an active shooter, it's maybe necessary to evacuate students and staff. We've discussed the details of what that looks like, the gathering site, the routes. We've had conversations with our bus drivers. Our bus drivers know where they're expected to be. They have a location for the elementary school. They have a location for the junior high high school, where they're going to pick kids up, and where, how they're going to bring the kids to the site, to the reunification site. What's going to be very difficult is that we're going to communicate with parents to reach my teach, which will be that quick email, quick phone call, tell them we have a situation that is going on right now. Go to this particular site in order to reunify with your child. Well, we hope that the majority of people take that to heart and listen to that, because that will help us tremendously. If everybody swarms to where the incident is, it's just going to cause more confusion. And that's going to be hard, because if it's your child and there's an incident at a building, you're going to want to know that your child is okay when your child might already be on a bus heading to the reunification site. So that's going to be tough, and that's going to be chaotic, and we know that. But we're trying to plan as best as we can for that particular situation. I already mentioned that reach my teach will be utilized to communicate with families. We've looked into other systems that might help us for when students approach on a bus, if it would be quicker to kind of identify who's going to be here. We've talked about having different Google Docs, how we might do this that everybody knows right off, they can get communication going as quickly as possible. So we're still looking at some of those pieces to make things run as smoothly as we possibly can. One of the things is going to be patience, and that's going to be crazy because, you know, what do you mean patience? You have an emergency. I want to know where my kid is. I want to know where everybody is. But people need to remember that within those first six to nine minutes, we'll do what we can, but we're trying, we're really trying to resolve the issue at hand. And we can't be sending messages necessarily if we're trying to save somebody. So people have to understand that.
Well, you know, if I could just add to that, Peter. I think if any parent was asked, "Would you rather have the school administrator sitting down writing an email message or taking care of my kid?" I don't think anybody's going to say, "I'd rather you take the time and send me an email, you know, unless other people worry about the kids." Like, we're going to be worried about the kids first, and then we'll get the message out as soon as possible.
I think I just touched upon this, and Chad just added a really nice, a really nice point, which is 100% correct. When parents, when parents come to the reunification site, obviously, we want to make sure that the student is going to get somebody they should be going to. So we'd ask that they have an ID present, and then the staff will direct you once you get to the site. We'll have signs. We'll have people outside directing parents as to where to go. So that is the basics of that, of the plan, without giving you too much of the details that we've had extensive discussions and conversations about. So I would open it up to the board if you have any questions that you would ask, if you want to know.
I would just say that Officer Stewart, the administrators, you all really care about knowing all of these kids and how they're doing and how they're feeling. And that, to me, is just the most important prevention, is to know these children. And you can tell if it's like, geez, you okay? And you all do that really well. Caring, noticing, I think noticing and connecting, including Officer Stewart. The kids love her. Like, it's, so that, to me, is the best prevention, is knowing, noticing, and acting. And you all do that beautifully.
Thank you.
Any questions? And I think that's our great note. And that discussion ongoing, honestly, because that is the biggest piece by far.
It's the hugest prevention right there.
Having kids here that are connected and tuned in, and they have a reason they want to be here, and and the adults in the buildings that are tuned in to those kids, you can't beat that.
If you think about the work that you do as a board, the policies that you approve, the procedures that we talk about, when you have a large number of students participating in something, we don't say, "Cut down." We say, "Can we add an assistant?" So that the kids can continue to participate, more kids, more kids, more active, more active. So there's a philosophy here about that. And I think that philosophy works in a very positive way to create that sense of community.
I think, what are you going to do?
I might have to fix it up. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Questions?
I know my kids, or a couple of my kids, not all of them, I have four in the high school. But they like that Say Something app. I don't know much about it, but my older boys have mentioned it, and it's just really easy to report things that might be iffy or they're concerned for somebody and stuff. They can do it.
Yeah.
And then you're not saying, and then you're not like the snitch because you're not going to the office and say, "Hey, Mr. Bill."
Well, we talked about the difference of snitching. Snitching is just trying to get somebody in trouble. But standing up and saying something is because you're concerned about somebody attacking you. You're concerned about them. You're concerned about somebody.
And an anonymous way to say that. Yeah, that's huge.
Yeah. And most of the Say Something reports are Yeah. And most of the Say Something reports that we get are peers that are worried about a friend doing something to themselves. That is like, they're depressed, you know, they're concerned they're not eating, like, that is most of the conversation. But it's also there, you see something on social media and you're like, "Ah, my just posted something really concerning about doing something at school tomorrow," you know, that's what I would report.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of a good tool, and we've had it for a while now.
We implemented it, no, we were at the old field, the past six, seven, eight, long.
Yeah.
Sandy Hook promised that the school shooting in Connecticut.
Yeah.
Their group of parents created it, because they felt, like most, it could have been prevented, someone would have said something.
Yeah.
To empower these kids to speak up.
It's free to us, we have to, we have to do the training. Students have to do the training as well. Administrators and those who are part of that team are pretty much on call 24/7, because it'll be a Sunday night, 1 o'clock in the morning, you get something.
And dispatch is part of that, so if something comes in overnight, I always tell the story, I was in Boston, I have a friend, so I was like, "It's 2 o'clock in the morning, say something, call." And I'm like, "Dispatch will get it." Well, then they called back, and like, "Okay, they need something." So I stumbled down the stairs in the dark in a house I'm not really familiar with, because I didn't want to wake everybody up, and they need an address for a kid so they can just go well-charged. So it works, works well.
Would you vote to approve the district safety plan?
Yes.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I think I'll start first.
Yeah.
Pick one.
It's too closer, I think.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the district safety plan? All right, next up, much livelier now.
Will we take all the appointments as a group?
Taken.
We have a motion, we have seconds. To take them as a group, any discussion as a group? Okay, all right. Not hearing anything? All in favor of taking the list of appointments as a group? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the list of appointments?
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor of approving the group of appointments? Resignations? Peter has already accepted those. One person retiring. That's been a long time. All right, other business? Don't think we have any other business, so they're being done. Our next meeting is December 15th, so be aware of that date. So, speaking. Dr. Yurin, I guess I would entertain a motion for German. You have a second? I got her hand up first. Okay, all in favor of German? Any others? Thank you, for your honor of December 15th.